Good evening. I will now call to order the January eleventh, twenty twenty four, City of South Pasadena Library Board of Trustees Meeting. Administrative Secretary Sean Fay, please call the roll.
Dean Sarwin.
Here.
Bianca Richards.
Here.
Annie Chang Long.
Here.
Kenneth Gross.
Here.
Ed Pearson.
Here.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Well, welcome everyone. We're going to start off our agenda. We have the, uh, the first item is public comment general, which is on non-agenda items. Uh, in an effort to better manage the business on the agenda, general public comment will be limited to thirty minutes at the beginning of the agenda. If there are speakers remaining in the queue, they'll be heard at the end of the meeting. If you'd like to make general public comment for items not listed on the agenda, uh, and under the hurt you of the library board of trustees, please now raise your hand on Zoom. Sean, do we have anyone on Zoom?
We do not.
Or turn in a speaker card. I don't see anyone other than our usual guests. Uh, Mr. Fay, let's give speakers a few seconds to raise their hand. There aren't any, uh, may I have a count of speakers? Uh, we have none. Uh, clerks will maintain a list of speakers. Uh, there's no one else present. I now declare the public comment period closed. Uh, we'll move on to presentations. Unfortunately, uh, it's been made aware of me that, uh, Bree, she's ill, went home or she had a
Something came up. They have to leave early today.
So Bree Taylor, our, uh, new children's services librarian will hopefully come back, uh, in February meeting, which hopefully I'll be here for. Uh, we'll move on to the action and discussion items. That was our presentation. Uh, reordering of additions or deletions to the agenda. Does anyone have any, uh, reordering of additions or deletions to the agenda? Great. Hearing none, we will continue with the next item. Approval of the minutes of December fourteen, twenty twenty three, Library Board of Trustees Meeting. Uh, it's recommended that, uh, the board review and consider, uh, for approval, the, uh, the December fourteen, twenty twenty three meeting minutes. Um, first off, does anyone have any public comment for this item? There's no, since there's no one here, uh, did everyone have an opportunity to look at the meeting minutes?
Yep.
They were excellent as always. Thank you again, Sean. Uh, can I get a motion?
Yeah, I, I moved to approve of the December fourteenth meeting.
Uh, I'll go ahead second. Uh, we have a motion and second staff clerk, please take the roll.
Dean Sarwin.
Yes.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Annie Chang Long.
Yes.
Kenneth Gross.
Yes.
Ed Pearson.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes.
Outstanding. So, uh, we're going to jump to, um, the, uh, fourth, excuse me, fifth item, which is our quarterly budget update. Thank you again to Kathy and staff for doing this for us. I know that it, we added a, a little wrinkle to you by asking for this. Um, uh, did everyone have an opportunity to, uh, review these numbers? Um, does anyone have any questions about them before I turn it over to Kathy?
I, I had one question I can ask it now or ask it from Kathy's, but it's just about the Calpers. Do we, I didn't realize something like that's in our budget anyway. Is that just, we didn't ever actually get that money. It's just.
Calpers, I'm kind of, um, liability.
Because the city's paying for it.
Yeah, so, so they, when they do the budget every year, they finance calculates all these benefits. So, so they're responsible for all of the things above the line that are benefits and, and salaries. Um, so where they come up with these numbers, I don't know, but I think helpers is one of the ones that they're paying, um, upfront at the beginning of the year. So that's why it's, you know, it's spent at this time of the year.
Yeah, I just don't understand why, but now I understand. So all the benefits are in our budget, you know, it's paid by the.
Yes.
A portion that is fine.
Yeah, because helpers, the staff pay into it and the city pays into it on our behalf. So this is the city's portion of that for the full-time employees or the employees that are in Calpers, one part, two part-time employees that are helpers employees.
Uh, did you have anything that you wanted to explain? I mean, I think it's very self-explanatory and discussed the, uh, that would the issue of certain items that are, uh, taken up all at once and then credited back to us over time and whatnot.
Yeah, I think, I, I don't have a lot. I think I would just point out the two, um, capital items that are not spent yet because I know we're already more than halfway through the fiscal year. Um, so you know, we've got to get those things going. Um, so one of those is the teen area. Uh, we finished the shifting that we need to do in there. And so we're going to be asking Public Works to take out shelving and, you know, repair the carpet temporarily so that it's safe and then moving into the process of, um, doing a little bit of refurbishment and new furniture. But that's why that's a lot a hundred percent because we simply haven't gone out to bid for the, for the design and furniture work. Um, the patio tables, which could come up later as well. The latest is that, um, they have a tentative installation date of January twenty second.
Nice.
Yeah, so that's exciting. Um, I think they have, I don't think that it's completely finalized, but they're optimistic that it'll be this month and they've given me that specific day, which is to, um, not next Monday, but the next, so soon. So that's exciting. Suddenly we'll have all those new tables and see what they look like. Um, it's been so long since we ordered them.
Yeah.
Uh, and then the other, uh, chunk was the machinery and equipment and that is the, um, ADA exterior book drop. And that's another one where it's, we collaborate with Public Works. So I've actually, um, I reached out to the Public Works Director this week and said, you know, we really need to get a meeting on the calendars that we can kind of just look at these things, especially because we didn't get the building forward grant money. So we kind of have to go back to that, um, capital improvement plan budget to see, you know, where can the money that we had allocated to be the match, we can spend, you know, we still have that money. So we just need to, we can figure what are we going to try to accomplish with that money? So, and the, yeah, the fiscal year is ticking. So we want to get those done. The, the capital improvement money will won't go away in the next fiscal year, but the, the budgets that are in our library budget, unless we make some special arrangements, we need to spend those this fiscal year. So that's the main thing that I would point out, just so you don't worry. We, we are on the, on the ball, you know, we're getting there.
Um, would it be appropriate or even something that we could do to maybe ask someone from, uh, Public Works to come in and not like presenter, stand trial in front of us, right? Just come and, to have a conversation with them about our, our hopes and dreams. Is it?
Well, I, I think we just have to be cognizant of your purview, you know, and that boundary between operational matters and policy matters. I would be somewhat reluctant, but if we, I think we just need to think about what that looks like and.
Not, not again, not to grill, but just to have a conversation about, hey, there's a, you know, we have these funds.
Right. Well, I mean, that's the staff will have that conversation and then we would report that, you know, um. Yeah, I mean, I think there are times when it might be appropriate, but in this case, to me, this seems more like an operational issue that then we report back to you. That's my thinking.
Outstanding. Does anyone have any other questions regarding the quarterly budget updates?
I have one other budget thing that I'll mention. Um, on an upcoming council meeting, I don't know if it's the next one or the next, they are, um, they have been negotiating with the part-time public services employee organization. So that's our quote unquote, union for the part-time employees. Um, and that is going to, uh, provided it's approved by the city council, um, make some changes to our part-time budget because there'll be a number of increases that are a part of that. I have not seen it yet. And again, it will go to council first before anywhere else. Um, but, but they reassured me that they are taking that into account and will adjust the salaries temp, part-time budget accordingly. But next time we see this, you might see a big change there and that will be why.
Good, you're good. Okay, great.
Can I just ask, how many part-time were, uh, employees are in the city? Citywide?
Citywide, do you know?
Um, I don't know. I mean, it's vast majority is the library and community services.
A lot though. It's like four, fifty or six. I mean, it's not a lot.
That's us. I mean, we have probably twenty some.
So those two departments are heavy.
I mean, I think the seasonal, yeah, season all, and I think maybe PG has, I mean, you know, some departments may have one or two, but for the most part, it's the library and community services. And yeah, community services is.
Well, yes, with the recreation.
Whereas ours is, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Outstanding. Um, there being no other questions, we'll, and, uh, that was the, uh, informational discussion. We'll move on to another informational discussion. We cover heads of site planning project.
While just going to.
Oh, sorry.
No, I just didn't know. I didn't know. So, um, just to recap where we have been, um, on December twentieth at the city council meeting, um, the city manager's office, so Dominica Megardjian, who is our deputy city manager, is the point person managing this project. So, um, a staff report was prepared to recommend to council that they at least begin to establish an ad hoc committee that would be guiding and involved throughout this process. Um, so they did establish such a committee and they appointed two council members, um, Councilmember Ron and Mayor Zinimer. And so the direction council gave was for those two to work with staff to figure out the, the makeup of the committee. So that's still in process. Um, uh, so we'll, we'll report back on that very soon. Uh, we did have a meeting this week with, um, the kind of the key staff persons and the mayor and council member Bronn, uh, which was productive, but, um, I don't really have anything to share specifically from that at this point, um, but it was a good discussion and the main thing and the big milestone that we, we managed to accomplish is they, um, they issued the request for qualifications right before the holiday. So, and I think I attached that to this. Um, so that went out and, uh, posted on Planet Big, which is a, you know, web-based vendor job connection site. And I, um, reached out to probably ten or so firms that I know, architectural firms that I, you know, have seen, met with, seen their work, you know, kind of handful of people, including, um, Gruen, who's doing, uh, the Pasadena and they did Bren Library and they, I think it's the Central Library in Glendale, um, a firm that's doing the Glendale's youth services renovation right now, the firm that's doing Altavina, the firm that did Whittier, um, and lots of others. Um, and those people were all enthusiastic and got back to me and said, yeah, you know, we're hoping to put in a proposal. So, um, the second piece of that is that, uh, the, the people that are considering doing a proposal get to send in their questions. So just today, we finished answering those questions and they needed to be posted by four o'clock. So we answered about fifty questions. Some repetitive, which always is interesting because then you see what, oh, I guess we lucked out of the RFQ, um, or they wouldn't, you know, they wouldn't have to ask if we had covered it. Um, but good questions, you know, um, people kind of, I think, trying to get a sense of, um, the scope of the project, um, a lot of questions about, you know, do you have technical drawings and do you have, have you done this kind of stuff? So kind of having to explain that we're sort of the me community outreach visioning piece, right? Not the nitty gritty, how many, you know, what's the electrical capacity of the block or whatever. So, um, so some good questions and hopefully we'll see lots of submissions. Um, and the idea is that the ad hoc committee members would have been established by the time those proposals are ready to be evaluated, reviewed and evaluated. So that's where, that's where we stand. I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Um, were there, was there, you said there was a lot of repetition, uh, which highlighted maybe what Dom had left out. Uh, was anything of any note, uh?
No, I would say, let me see, I have it over here. Um, no, some of, some of them were very, there, there were a couple of things that were uh, maybe not explained properly. So like one question was if, or we didn't explain it all, if we, um, respond to this request, are we precluded from responding to a later request for the, you know, design phase or future phases? So the answer to that is no, you're not precluded. Um, questions about like the historic piece, you know, do you have documentation about you know, the cultural heritage destination? Do you have, you know, asking for more information? So in the answers, we provided them links to, um, the Marks and O'Kubo facility assessment that we did last May. Um, we gave them access to a two thousand and six ADA assessment for the senior center and the library, which was obviously a long time ago, but that's what we have. There's a little bit of ADA stuff in Marks and O'Kubo, but that was not their focus. Um, and we gave them access to the, uh, the applications that in nineteen seventy-two it was submitted to be designated as a culture, cultural heritage landmark. So that kind of has the description of what's historic. It was actually interesting. I've never read that. So it was interesting to read it and see what was described. For example, it described the old children's room, which was part of the old building, the Carnegie building that was moved and destroyed in nineteen eighty-two. So interesting because nowadays if if it had been a reference, right? I mean, I'm curious to go back to the records and see if there was any discussion about are we okay, you know, tearing down this whole backside, you know? Anyway, so, so we gave them access to that, which was, uh, good for me to take a look at it and also good for them. So, yeah, question, let's see. Again, lots of, you have geotechnical surveys, um, very specific things that we explained that, that were not at that point yet. Um.
I had, I had a thought as I was walking in this evening. Um, did anyone question about the wooden chair?
No, not specifically. I mean, people, some people did bring up like, you know, do you have a, a site map with the trees, you know, that clearly thinking ahead to the, these are issues that will have, will have to be considered, but nobody specifically asked about the modern day.
Cause I, I, I just had a thought that, you know, if, if the end product is raising and rebuilding completely, there's probably a root system that goes down deep that has to be accounted for because any, any, any tree can be killed on this property except that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that will be interesting to see what the workaround is for that particular tree.
Was there a timeline in RFQ for, um, what, how long the project would be?
Um, the timeline in the RFQ.
Curious for like that one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, that, that, that was, that's described as phase one, um, with the idea that, you, you know, in future fiscal years, there would be, you know, we will be asking for additional funding. So no, it did not spell out like a long-term timeline for these phases.
So they'll probably propose a timeline of how long they think it will take them to get to that.
I would, I would hope that they're going to come back with, you know, here's the outreach we would do. Here's how we would do it. Here's how long it would take. I mean, you know, right? They have the expertise to know what that looks like. Um, the other piece, uh, that I think I can share is that, um, the city's been talking to a consultant who has done this kind of work before. He's a retiree from the Southern California area. He now is based, I think, at North Carolina, but he did, he's done worked with a lot of libraries in this area. So I think we're working to get him kind of on an on-call basis. So we have someone who's done this before that we can ask questions or that person can come and talk to the ad hoc committee and give them a sense of what to expect, you know, because I don't know that staff are in a position to speak to that. So I, I'm excited about that. Having someone who's kind of done this before that we will have as a resource, you know, um, so.
Everything's easy once you know how to do it.
Yeah, and someone, you know, they know the pitfalls, they know. I mean, again, just in speaking to some of the architects when I was up in Hayward, you know, they, they, they know this. They know it really well. And, um, so having someone in addition to whoever, you know, ends up being hired for this phase, um, just having that person kind of at the get-go that's has this broader knowledge, I think is a good thing.
Has there even been any kind of discussion? I don't know if this is appropriate for so early in the, uh, plan, but, uh, are, are we, is it bound, uh, that the entrances and the exits? Can they be changed at all?
Um, I think that's still a piece of discovery and that needs to be researched. I mean, I, I, I would like them to.
Look at everything.
Yeah, yeah.
What is possible.
Yeah, so not just.
I mean, I was thinking, should we like move the whole, like move the community room to, you know, yeah, I don't know.
Change the.
I think we, we've talked about potentially that, that the neighbors over here would really love if everything was pointed that way instead of this way.
Yeah, right. Right. So, yeah, I mean, I think that's what this process is about. I think phase one is, a lot of phase one is getting the input from the community, um, getting the buy-in, finding out what people want. Um, and maybe a little bit of the, what's feasible, but not like a deep dive into, again, the geotechnical studies and whatever. Um, but there should be a piece of that. I mean, I think we would come out at phase one with some maybe conceptual drawings of like, here's what you could do on this site. Yeah, this, you know, here's some, some ideas and, and here's some ballpark. Square, you know, square footage or, but I forgot how they measure it, cost that, that you could plan on. So, yeah, I think that's phase one. And then the getting into the really nitty gritty of what are we going to top the tree or, you know, traffic flow, all of these things. Um, it's for later, I think. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Well, uh, do we have any other questions about the comprehensive site planning project, item six? If not, then move on to item seven, which is.
I'm going to make, oh, I'm going to make public comment.
On the.
The, of the site. Man.
Sure.
Okay, and I'll fill out a card. Um, I was just wondering about a number of things, what the role is as a department head on, on this committee or what their, um, um, participation would be. Um, the senior center. It, it was kind of just sprung on everybody, although we've been thinking about this whole concept. But, uh, I think, I don't, I don't know that they knew that this was all coming and they haven't had a parallel strategic plan like the library has. No one, you know, and they have a very vital program going there that a lot of people depend on. So that's a big gap. We haven't really ascertained what they need, what the seniors need. Um, you know, the apartment head, the staff, it's really big program there. Uh, in terms of needs, how do we do a need study, uh, economically of the community and what, what are the needs that such a, a, a community center could satisfy? Not just the people who come to the library all the time, not the people who come to the senior center, but just the city, the residents. How do we determine that? And then how many people will be on this committee? Because by the time you get representative, the library board, the friends, the various things that you have a half a dozen already. So, um, and I know we want people from the public. So was there an idea of how many?
I believe that, uh, it was proposed, uh, that the community members, uh, mirror the, uh, the, the city, so the, uh, between the two from the council and, uh, one or two from here and whatever other uh, city groups. So then there'd be, uh, uh, I believe the intent was an equal number from, uh, at least an equal number from community.
Mm-hmm. I think not just community, specifically the, um, senior center, I think, so.
Well, I think, I think that would count as part of the, the city side of that.
Okay.
So we're not really allowed to just respond to the public comment questions, but if you would like to ask staff to expound a little bit.
Okay, staff, could you expound on what the, uh?
Yeah, I think I'm allowed to do that.
It was public comment or publicly stated at the, um, city council meeting where this ad hoc was discussed on December twenty.
Right. So on December twentieth, you know, staff had made a recommendation that included, you know, this idea that we need to have the, the seniors and the community services piece represented. We need to have the library represented. We need to have the community represented. Um, but the council did not adopt those recommendations, which is fine. I mean, we were really going for the direction and, you know, what do you, what do you think? And I think, like you said, um, some of the comment that we heard at that time was that we need a balance between kind of the tried and true, longtime library senior center lovers and the members of the community who use these places or don't use these places. So, um, I think that was, is one focus is that we make sure we balance those voices. Um, I know at your last meeting, I, I wasn't here, but I watched the video and, um, you know, you guys were talking about intergenerational and, um, neighbors, you know, all of these different constituents. So I think that, uh, as we move forward and as the ad hoc committee begins to get developed and work together, I, I think that, uh, one of our jobs is to, um, not only identify an ad hoc committee, but to make sure that as we begin this process, we cast a wide enough net so that people who are not part of that ad hoc committee, which can't be everybody in town, right? Um, they know where they do fall in, you know, so if you're the cultural heritage commissioner or if you're the, you know, the preservation foundation, you know, making sure that people see that they have a role to play somewhere in that, in that long phase, that phasing. Um, so, yeah, I think that, um, we'll know more. I mean, I, I think that the thinking is definitely the, the library and, and senior center community service needs to be represented for sure. So, you know, if there's any question about that, but the exact, um, the exact, uh, exactly who, and especially with the public, members of the public, you know, how will they be selected, recruited? You know, so, so we have some kind of procedural things to figure out and, um, we obviously cannot recruit for a committee unless we clearly defined what those people are meant to be doing. So we'll need to develop that piece too. Like here's, here's the goal. Here's your role and responsibility. Here's the time commitment. Here's the expectation. So I think we have that piece to do before we can even go out and even amongst like, uh, board members, right? I mean, you would want to know before a discussion happens about, you know, is there a rep from the, there's a rep from the trustees on the thing, you know? We need to kind of capture what that looks like. I think the vision is that the ad hoc committee is active from the whole time, you know, so like three years. I mean, there's potential.
Years.
And, 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 and really involved, you know, looking at proposals, not just a rubber stampy body, but really engaged body.
Well, I think, uh, you know, uh, maybe, maybe in wherever it is that if you couldn't, let's say you, we always have the ability to do consultation with like cultural heritage.
Right.
The preservation. So like, let's say if there's not a body representing that entity, at least uh, are these committees, are they Brown Act?
It will be.
So then remind me again, so then you can only talk to one person?
Yeah, or you want to.
You're going to like, so.
Depends on the number of people on the committee.
Right. You can't, you can't have a majority talker to each other. So like if you had twelve people or let's call it eleven people, you could not have six together. Unless it was a noticed meeting.
But you, but, but in a group like that, you could have a sub-group who went out and talked to, uh, cultural heritage and then brought it back to the committee?
That's a good idea.
Committee?
I think so. I mean, it'd be like.
I mean, like, let's say the, uh, people on the committee had a little homework assignments to go out and research this or go talk to the school district or go talk to, you know, glove law and then come back and report. So you could do that.
Yeah, I think so, committee, yeah.
Yeah, because that would be a way to involve the community without having a body representation.
And I think that's really the key. I think that everybody recognizes that it's going to be very important to have the community involved.
Yeah.
And feel like they're involved and have input. And, um, so I think that's the, it's critical. How do we do that? And what makes sense? Um, you know, without creating too much process.
Right. And not having, and not having a huge committee, but, but making sure that you've got, you know, the schools, the, all the different levels of the schools have a say.
I know. Yeah, yeah, exactly. I mean, there's a lot of groups. There's a lot of people. There's a lot of people who don't, aren't represented in groups.
Yeah.
Um, and that's the other question. It's like, how do you, how do you reach those people? So, anyway, I think it, it, it's, I mean, it's gonna, it's coming along. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, even considerations like, okay, so. Yeah, I mean, even considerations like, okay, so you have your appointed council members, but what if they turn off or, so we need to have like a, a system in place for this committee, you know, and what will happen, if it's gonna be in existence for this long period of time, you know, there's pieces that we need to figure out, not just who's going to be on it, but you know, how's it going to kind of work?
Kind of going back to the RFQ and as related to the committee, who's scoring the proposals?
Um, but I, I think that's gonna be the ad hoc.
Maybe, so it does need to come together somewhat.
I think that the, the timeline that they have for review is, it's kind of. Yeah, so initial review is in quote, quote, March. So the deadline is not next week, but the next. But then there's quite a period of time there to work on the ad hoc. Uh, to, to, to the point about the, the seniors and the senior center and the community services, um, you know, we've talked about this as a body. We know from previous.
Yeah.
Activities that it, it, you know, we need to include the whole site in these conversations and thinking about the site. Um, and I think we all know that, but I, I think there was definitely um, a real push to try to get that RFQ out before the end of the calendar year. So, we did make sure, I, I, I made sure that there was reference to this, the senior center, um. I kind of changed the site overview and then I added information about the senior center, which I took from the downtown specific plan and the general plan, because I'm not an expert on the senior center, but I wanted that to be in there, right? I mean, something had to be in there. So that's where I took that information from. But yes, going forward, um, I think everybody, um, staff that's involved recognizes that we need to be thinking beyond just library. That's why the nomenclature you'll see, I mean, that was one of the things before the RFQ went out, I said, let's, we need to decide what we're calling it. We purposely took away the word master because that has um, diversity, equity, inclusion, um, issues and can, it is offensive to some people and, um, some after doing some research, you know, organizations that work in this field have made statements about, we're gonna move away from that, so we're using the word comprehensive. Um, and then also it's not just the libraries, right? So, so we made that conscious decision to try to create that nomenclature and use that from now on. So yeah, we, I, I think that, yes, there's a recognition that you know, we wanted to get that out by the end of the calendar year. Maybe we, it, it was rushed and now we need to go back and bring everybody into the bulk. Um, the meeting that we had this week, so, um, Lucy Hakobian, who's the deputy director of community services, longtime city employee, she, she left for a few years and came back, but well-known in the community and well-liked, uh, she's the representative from, um, that department, she's the team. So she was at the meeting this week and, you know, starting to get that, that that subset of people involved. But we're getting there, we're getting there.
Well, great. Uh, do we, you have any other public comments or questions to this item? Excellent. Let's move on to item seven, the volunteer recognition item.
I wanted to bring that up because, um, I've been looking back historically. That's, it's been evolving over time. I'd be curious to hear what, what it was like when Ed was on the board a number of years ago. But it seems like staff have been taking on more and more of the responsibility and, um, I don't know if that's sustainable. So I just wanted to kind of have a conversation now before we get too close about what's, what's realistic. You know, I was looking back at old volunteer recognition brochures, they were like eight pages. Well, now they're twenty pages long, you know, so it's, it's kind of, and, and even, um, you know, the speakers, staff didn't touch it, at least previously, not, maybe not in the last round of leadership before that. So I'm just, yeah, I just wanna kind of put that out there and have you guys start thinking about what's, um, what you're comfortable with, uh, taking on. Um, I think for us, it makes sense, I think, for us to do the brochure because we maybe have that skill set and we can and we have the information that needs to go in it. Um, but maybe having the, the trustees take on the role of, of looking for the speaker of the entertainment and making, doing that outreach as opposed to just telling us to go do the outreach. That's what it used to look like before. So Ed, what, do you remember from your years?
I do, and. And it, it shames me to admit to it, but one year I was assigned decorations. They were the most pathetic decorations ever put in the, the community room. Uh, but that's what we did. We went around the table and, okay, you're gonna be in charge of food and you're gonna be in charge of decorations and you're gonna be in charge of the RSDP list or whatever. Um, and so it was mostly trustees doing it. Um, yes, I think probably the, the discussion of who to get for a speaker would be done at this kind of thing and that was when Steve was librarian and he would suggest so-and-so. Oh yeah, that sounds great. So, uh, it was largely a trustee-generated event. I'm wonderful if staff can do more than was done at that time.
Yeah, finding that balance.
So, the Friends of the Library used to fund it. And I hate to admit this, but during my presidency, we discussed at our retreat that that's really not what we should be doing to recognize ourself. And, um, there was pushback from the trustees with that, but we, we stopped funding it and maybe at that point even stopped helping. What, I mean, never, not nice, but yes, we stopped paying for it, because they used to go and get the sandwiches, remember at, uh, uh, the munch company. Munch company and it was, and you've made it very, um, elegant.
Yeah.
Uh, it just, you would come, you'd sit there with your lap with your plate of food.
Oh yeah, no table.
And no table and hear the speaker.
Somebody got us to get the table.
Yeah, so it really has become, become, um, it's really, really nice. But it used to be much simpler.
Yeah, so that, I, I just, that's what I'm seeing. Like, I know that last year, it took a, a lot of my time and Sean's time too, but, um, yeah, I just think we need to look at that and kind of think about roles and responsibilities and what can we do to make it manageable for staff? You know, do we, you know, do we decide that the, the brochure is not gonna be that long, you know, I mean, we just need to decide. And like you said, I think it was simpler.
It was, yeah.
And it was, people did this, we didn't write a whole thing about.
And it was still very nice. I mean, it was.
Who cares for it now?
Um, the, it is, uh, budgeted in the library's budget under the board of trustees line. So there really isn't enough money in there, so we spend those funds and then we spend what we need to spend out of the library's special department expense line item.
What was, what was the expense last year?
Ooh, that's a good question and I should have brought this, this is on the agenda. I wanna say.
Sounds like a reasonable idea. We all split up things we're gonna do, but.
I wanna say we spent maybe thirteen, fourteen hundred dollars last year.
That would be, because I know the friends used to give a thousand and that was back in two thousand sixteen, is what we would budget.
Right, because this year we, we wanted music, like we had more.
Yeah.
Honorary, uh, maybe than we have in the past. Um, yeah, so that, it's, it's about that. They used to do like a whole, like a luncheon. Um, but we've now moved to this morning thing, which is a little bit, um, you know, a little different and a little bit probably less expensive in terms of the food, so that does leave more money for other things.
I would posit that we could probably dial back the food as well, because my recollection and correct me if I'm wrong, is that there was a lot left.
Yeah, for sure.
Um, so we could simplify that. Uh, I think that we probably wanna, uh, aggressively move forward on this, because it's in less than three months. So, uh, I would ask that, uh, Kathy, if you could bring us uh, or maybe even supply to us interstitially, uh, the, the actual budget.
Okay.
Uh, with all the individual line items and whatnot, uh, as well as if there was a breakdown of uh, roles and, uh, obligations, so that we can see and uh, decide at our next meeting and agendize, I, I requested the agendas after the next meeting to, um, uh, break that down between the, uh, members of the library board. Uh, so that we can actually have time to get that done, because it definitely will have two months.
Right, yes, I will definitely do that. I'll send an email, um, with the budget and kind of a proposed timeline, so we have, you know, by this time we should have done this.
Along with, you know, department, departments, shall we say. These, these were the obligations that, that needed to get done to make this happen.
Yeah.
What's the date of the events?
This question?
Please.
Um, and this, more to Kathy, what is it that the volunteers really like about, about the recognition of that? I mean, but so what's really important to them? Because it's such the, is it this, you know what I mean? Is it the public?
Yeah.
Expression of thank you? Is it the city actually doing something? Like, what is it that they look?
I mean, I think maybe others can speak to this, but we've had this conversation, like, are we doing it for them or? Right, so I think that, um, we think they, they like to have the opportunity to get together and be able to all see each other at the same time. I think they do appreciate being recognized, because they work really hard all year and you know, I don't know, you know, they come and go like the police, they don't get a lot of pats on the back all year long. Um, so I think they appreciate that. Um.
Yeah, what do they want? That's what I'm asking, like, what, what is it that they're looking?
Would it be odd to present them with a, a, a short survey?
I, I could speak. I don't think anybody is looking for, I mean, it's not what they want, it's not what, because mostly what you're recognizing is the friends, the bookstore or restoration concerts. So I don't even think a survey would even help, especially with our board that many of them haven't even been to it. I mean, I don't think anybody is on the board to be recognized. In my opinion, that's not why we're doing it and, I mean, it's nice. It's nice to be recognized, but I don't think that if it went away, I mean, we have people many times turn it down.
Yeah.
You've had, you've asked people and they said, oh, no, no, I'm, I'm.
You mean the award?
The award, yeah.
Some people wanna.
It's gotta be under the radar.
Yeah.
What, what if it was combined, at some point, with something else?
Well, you, you know, I mean, it's a little early, but I would think that you could do something like with the Friends annual meeting. To do that at the same time, because I, I, I am shocked, I, uh, part of my report is that, you know, I sent out the annual meeting and this time I bet there was refreshments. Oh my gosh, we have people coming. Uh, you know, before we used to do, when we had Steve, we had, um, events and we would have a hundred and some people. Now, the last couple of times, nobody, but I just said that this would be, like, you know, come in here and and there will be refreshments and actually, we probably have ten that have said they're coming so far, so.
I, I, I like Kenny's idea that we can maybe do it, like, I, I mean, years ago, and I know it was a hassle, but years ago at the, uh, holiday book sale where we used to be able to serve more of wine and refreshments, there was a lot bigger crowd of, yeah, the volunteers would come out.
And you could have like a volunteer reception in that, that afternoon.
This summer, where it's all the committees are, you know, with the.
That would not make, that, that's a city event.
But see, it would be helpful, because like, now I have to do it all. I have to go set it up, I have to get food now, I have to because there is no other help. So it would probably, I'm, I'm sure the friends, I can't speak to them, because I'm not gonna be president anymore, but
That's a, that's a, that's a, that's a good idea.
I can bring, I can bring it up.
Where do the, uh, volunteers that we honor, where does that, what's that pool coming from?
It's mostly friends, people not.
Then it would make sense that we do do something in combination with an event that the friends are already doing and funding, um, and that, that maybe can, instead of asking you to fund your own event and funding an event for us, which you've stopped doing, we could do a combined event.
Yeah.
And if the library has some, uh, money that it's been utilizing anyway, maybe that's something that we could agendize to have a more formal conversation, because I think we're getting a little, uh, a feel of our agenda item, not sure.
Well, and it really was just to discuss and kind of take a temperature, how, what you think and, yeah, I mean, kind of getting into the nitty-gritty, I was thinking we would do.
And quite honestly, you've kind of run out of volunteer, so. I don't mean it in a negative way, but usually, but usually there, these, most of ours are now have been on the board for a year. And so before you had people who had been on there ten years, fifteen years, maybe never had been recognized. So that's, I'm not saying that in a mean way, maybe it comes across that way, but I'm just saying, I've always felt that we don't, we don't volunteer to get recognized.
But I, and I think like, like I, I noticed last year again, people wanna come to, to social. And I think they wanna just get out, so maybe it's, it's a chance to just uh, do something like that and then just, just kind of be an easygoing to say, you know, we thank, you know, we're thankful for you.
It's a win-win, I think, because it draws people in, you know, the city and everybody else to the annual meeting and then this record.
Where do you usually hold the annual meeting?
Right here in the. It's the eighteenth.
Yep, this month.
This month, yeah. If anybody, if you were, if you were friends, if you were a member of the Friends of the Library, you got a notice.
Yeah, this would be a twenty twenty-five issue. But I, I, I think that, as, if you could include in the agenda item, maybe discussing, uh, formally, uh, uh, combining the volunteer event with the Friends of the Library annual meeting.
I mean, and we, I know you just said it would be twenty twenty-five, but we might wanna, if we really wanna go in that direction, do something different this year, like I already have a really cute little, um, little, these little bookmark things and they're customized, South Asian library, love you, something, something. Um, you know, we could not have the get-together this year, we could do something different, just send everybody a little gift and, and a card or whatever and, and change our schedule, right? Making us do one.
How many volunteer events are, or, I'm, I'm, I've seen that event, how many volunteers are there in the pool that we're selecting from to honor?
I mean, bookstore has forty, probably forty-something and, um, the board is almost what, twenty? I mean, it's a lot.
Yeah, well, a lot of the positions, yeah, so.
And then the restoration concerts.
Yeah, I mean, but they've all been pretty.
No, but what Kathy said, you know, if we could, um, we probably couldn't get something together to make it be, you know, something that's in nine days, eight days.
Oh, no, no, yeah, yeah. And we, you know, we're, our agenda's already kind of set, because people need to leave and.
I, I didn't mean to, to go on and make it a double. I meant to, to have a, 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 a chachki that we give as in appreciation. But maybe instead of doing this event, um, we take that budget, put it into elevating something, uh, because between the, the, those bookmarks and the postage and some, you know, some stationary cost to print up a thank you note um, that we, that the board can all sign and, you know, and, and staff can sign in recognition of your volunteerism, uh, and just send that out to everyone instead of having an event, which people do enjoy coming to, um, uh, however, it, it, it does feel a little like forced, maybe.
Yeah, I mean, when we do the invites, it's always very nerve-wracking, because right, we're going to all this trouble to recognize that, to the group of people, and if they don't come, that, then they're not getting thanked at all. Like, the, the thank you that they get is this in-person activity.
You know, and a lot of things, like they used to do those fundraisers, the thank you, where they put like a tea bag, you know, sit back and relax, thank you for all that you've done. There's little cute things, like you said, that you can do to acknowledge them. And even if you didn't wanna spend postage, you know, you have the basket.
They're all here.
They're here, yeah. So you would, you could put a basket in the bookstore or you could mail it to them or.
I, I don't, I can't speak for anyone else. I get so few pieces of mail that are not solicited and filled or jumped. That the idea of actually respeaking something in the mail, that is for me, just as a celebration. I think would be.
And handwritten, yeah. I always open up something where I know it's handwritten, other, yeah, yeah.
Kathy, when is like National Library Week?
Well, that's partly why, April, it's in April and so is, um.
National Volunteer Week.
Oh, really?
April sixteenth to twenty-second, I just looked it up.
Oh, and it's the Friends of the Library.
See, I think we should do a.
See, I think we should do a combination of that. So we could do something that's not in person in April. And then we could do some kind of joint thing that takes the pressure off everybody a little bit. Come if you want. You know, you know, again, I feel like we do this event and then how many people don't come and therefore don't really get any kind of.
Recognition. But one of the things I see as a real positive about the event is it is celebration of library.
Sure.
And you get the chief of police here and the, you know, fire captain and whatever. And and everybody in the city is saying how wonderful it is that we have this wonderful library. And I think that's useful uh as an in-person thing. Um, so I don't know that I'm ready to just abandon that idea.
Well, I think.
Now I have another idea.
Oh, yeah, but that in we would do in person, we're we would just be changing the.
We'd wrap it down.
So what if, what if, because we do a quite a bit for the thank you. And and so what I'm saying with that library week, what if we did something like that instead of. That we do something every day, we provide lunch, we do all kinds of stuff. What if you kept the April date and do that in combination with the volunteer recognition?
So what would we do on that specific day?
Well, maybe kind of the same thing, but you would split the duties with the friends board. So they're also putting, you know, it would recognize not only the friends, but the staff, you know, all that.
Well, I don't know if I want to dilute volunteer recognition with.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know, that's just my.
Okay, I just thought if we're if you, it was in April and you want to get the fire department, you know, chief or whatever.
I mean, we would still do the proclamation at council um. You know, and have that opportunity to share how many volunteer hours and how many volunteers and how great it was and. Everything they did for us. So so that would still be like publicly acknowledged. Um. But the in-person piece would just would be moved and potentially done in some kind of collaboration. I think that I think that we can put together some of these ideas and share some information before the next meetings. Yeah, you can start to percolate.
Yeah.
Um, and then we can maybe try to make some decisions and Ellen, maybe you can raise. The issue with the board and just kind of say that this conversation happened, what do they think?
It might be a a a good thing to not be spending library budget on or as much library budget on when we're going to be. Gearing up to go to the community to say, hey, the library needs you to come and and donate, you know, thirty million dollars so we can build the new building. Uh, oh, and but we're spending money on on.
Well, Ed could probably answer this question. This was my understanding is that it was never came out of the library budget before. The trustees were always always asked. Because that is kind of a role of the trustee to put in, not necessary for volunteers, but to put in money and then the friends subsidize that.
Well, we used to know, we used to have to, no.
You can't ask them to.
No, we used to have to, with Steve, we used to, um, Steve would ask us to turn in all of our receipts.
Right.
Because I know I was on the board when Steve was here and I went to go pick up. I don't know, I was in charge of something and Steve said, make sure you have a clean receipt, Bianca.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, we're a city commissioner.
Trustees shouldn't be spending their personal money on on this.
That's interesting because at the library, um, the serving with a purpose, they they talked about how the trustees. Should that is their role is, I mean, maybe they're not part of the city, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can't ask them to do it, right?
Right.
I'm certainly able to tell you, I pick up a lot of expenses that I don't.
Okay, so maybe that's it.
But you don't, yes, you can't expect people to do that, in my view, but it could be that there's trustees who say.
Say, yes.
Oh, let's we do that, yeah.
Got it.
I mean, I I the the amounts are are small. Like, if you compare what we're spending on that to Commissioner Congress, which is another recognition event and bringing people together. It's not close. I mean, it's a drop in the bucket. So. I I think that people are, if we were doing that for staff and spending the money to recognize staff, that would be different. I hope people love a volunteer and appreciate volunteers and. I think they probably would not.
I think it's more important we we spend the money on staff than on the volunteers. Um.
Just to clarify, guys, I want to relieve you all from the stress of having to think about planning it because I think that's what I heard is one of the main points of feedback too is. We're saying that for the April event, it will be a toned down company, but we're still contemplating keeping the date.
I I think that we're have talked about a couple of possibilities. One is that we keep April and we do something. Either what we've always done or some modified version, or we. Another option is to move our in-person event to January and do it in in. Collaboration with the Friends Annual Meeting. Um. And but do something then that in in April, National Library Week, Friends of the Library Week. Um, to thank them individually in some way, but not in everybody come together.
Yeah, maybe we could, we could uh still have uh. A recognition acknowledgement in the community room, but instead of having. A speaker and music and refreshments, it's we're going to uh invite these people have invite the same people from the city. But have it be more of a, I don't want to say press conferencey style, but that kind of a thing where it's here, we're here, thank you very much. Here's the people that got. Uh uh honored. Uh uh click, click, put it in the paper. So people see library, volunteer, uh friends. And and they see that and we get the that recognition going, not necessarily for the volunteers, but for the library and the friends as a whole. So that uh it keeps it in the public sphere.
But they do that at the city council meeting. They give the they give.
Yeah, they give the proclamation.
The proclamation and picture and everybody's present at the city council meeting. I see, I.
I don't think anybody's going to go.
I don't think anybody's going to go.
Street, nothing just come.
No, why would you come? I mean, I wouldn't come, I would go, that's not. Yeah.
Do you need a vote from us on what you know?
Uh, this was just discussion.
Very good discussion.
Well, I I feel like I've gotten some direction and we can come back for next month with some like, here's some options. Yeah. Um, the other thing be thinking about is the awards. I mean, when it's we have to dredge up the people to give those awards.
Yeah.
Because over however twenty-five years. You know, it and and really like who's more, all the volunteers work really hard.
Exactly.
Very hard to, even you know, even the nominees, you know, right? You guys are like, I don't know who the nominee is.
Everybody's great and everybody.
Everybody should just be, yeah, I almost wonder.
We don't recognize everybody?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I was saying. I I like this idea of if you've got a lovely bookmark and and that tea bag, we could buy some very nice, you know, fancy tea bags, those little.
Good ideas.
Yeah, um, and just put put together.
Tea forte have the cute little ones with the little.
And we could just send that out to every volunteer. Thank you for you, you know, we we could all sign it. We could have all staff sign it. And just send that and say in lieu of of the.
I think they would real, I think that is. Yeah, because when you start singling people, I've always had like with PTA to have these honorary service awards and. You know, there's those silent people that come to everything.
Work their butts off.
Yeah, but they don't hold the position and they always are not recognized.
Right, it's really hard to. Say that there's a volunteer that's gone so far above and beyond all the other, and it's not the message you want. So that's another thing that do we just get rid of? Kind of a pin.
Well, you know, and the other thing that we could do is we could just say, have it in a in a nice note and just say. And uh look forward to in January twenty twenty-five, this new event that will happen and that will get everybody excited.
I I I think that that sounds really fantastic. This is, this is the antithesis of my usual, everybody gets a trophy. This is the kind of thing where everybody should get a trophy. Because everybody is standing up and doing.
So I better do it at this board meeting because I can encumber the next board and I'm not the president.
See what they think about these these ideas that we're throwing around, Ellen, and and let me know.
I will, um.
Uh, I think we've we've rushed this out, we can, we will flesh it out, we are you will flesh it out again next month. Um, at this point, I think we should probably move on to uh item eight, if that's okay with everyone. Uh, the library board of Congress twenty twenty-four agenda forecast. I'm going to turn it over to our screen director.
Um, so this is something that I started making a couple of years ago, I think, just because. For myself partly, you know, like what happens throughout the year, what are the things we need to do when? So these are sort of good standing things. Um, budget things, um, we have things related to uh the um. The special tax, uh, we now have. According to the strategic plan, we should be doing some kind of more formal update for you guys to let you know what progress we've made. Um, so those are the things that are on here. Uh. Obviously, there will be all kinds of things happening that are unique to this year. We don't necessarily know what they are yet. Um, but this really is just, this is for all of us to kind of get our heads around what the year looks like and um. If you have questions or things, you know, direction about things that aren't here that you feel like we should be here, we can have that conversation as well.
But I think this is excellent. Um, I I would like to see, you know, we do have our um item agenda number or or work plan. Number one, the comprehensive review and update. Um, so it would be lovely if we could uh maybe uh get that on at least every other month.
Yeah, last last month.
I know it's a lot.
Well, last month they wasn't here and so I ended up giving you just kind of a little, here's what we've done. And just trying to, you know, we've actually done quite a lot. Um, and I think that what we said was that we would come back with a new kind of. Goal, you know, timeline, because the first time we did a timeline and brought it, it was way, way ambitious. Um, and yeah, was just too ambitious. Um, so, yeah, I think that. We could try to set a goal that we're going to do it every other month, but I I think I would rather come in February with the list again. Um, because, you know, again, some of the policies are quick and easy, some are long, 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 some are more important because of something that's happening in the world or whatever. So, um. I I kind of want to get you guys on board with which ones when, so that you're not coming to meetings feeling like. When are you, when are we going to get one? Where are we going to get one? So, um, that that's what I would like to do, but yeah, hopefully it could be every other month or, I mean, it's frequently possible.
If there are some, like you said, that that might be a little less controversial of of update or booking. Uh, maybe we could just analyze, we, you could, you and staff could analyze. Uh, find five or six of those so that we at least have. Something and then have a a few more comprehensive ones that we pepper in uh at larger intervals. But that way we we are actually accomplishing that goal.
Right, and not, yeah, exactly, so that we see some progress. The other thing about some of these is that. Um, they're a little bit uh dependent on the city. Developing and publishing their policies, like we have policies that we should, that are not really in our purview. They're, the HR should have that policy. We can't make our own policy about what volunteers. Can do or how they get fingerprinted. I mean, that's not, and and it probably was twenty years ago because. I'm sure we were doing it all on our own over here. Um, so, yeah, there, that's another piece of it is that I working with management services to to see as they develop. Their, the city's administrative policies. That will help us then clean up some of the things that are just hanging around that I'm pretty sure we.
Is that something that we could, um, and again, I apologize using the royal we. Um, that that staff could put together a list of those saying, hey, can we please present these to the city attorney to have them weigh in on? If this is something that should or should not continue to be in the purview of our regulations?
Um, I could.
Because maybe we could knock out four or five right there.
Yeah, I I mean, I I talked to the uh Management Services Director about this a little bit. Um. I mean, they're like all the departments, they have so much on their plates. You know, we just got the new phone system, they're implementing an agenda management software, they implemented an RF. Uh, a public records request software, they're doing our computer replacements, we implemented Microsoft teamings, I mean, they are just. Cranking stuff out, but I know that behind the scenes, they are trying to work on these policies, work on the HR. Policies and manual. So it's been a while since I've actually had that conversation with him. So I think probably what I would do is. Yes, I'll I'll talk to Lewis and say, hey, remember when we talked before and there are these policies that don't seem right for us? Are are you at a point now where you can say, yes, we have a policy? Get rid of that. So, yeah. Yeah, it would be, you're right, I should, I should check in because it's been a while. But they've been busy, but I know there were, I mean, I know that. All these things that are really noticeable, they've got a lot going on behind the scenes and policies and procedures. Um, so, yes, I will, I'll do that and that can be part of the update um and the agenda item on February.
Excellent. Does anyone else have any uh questions, comments, concerns regarding or or public comment? Regarding the library board of Congress twenty twenty-four agenda forecast? If not, um, uh, I would love to move on to library operations update. Uh, with only one quick question, will there be something in there about the app? And if not, can we agenda that for next time?
Yeah, about the app to discuss with you guys, like an item, okay, yeah. And yes, I can talk about any operation, but let me make a note. Uh, so what what Dean's referring to is that um the library uh. Has an app that I don't know when we implemented a couple, two and a half, three years ago, it's it's been out for a while. Um, and number of users, I forget off the top of my head, how many downloads, three thousand or something downloads. Um, the vendor that we that provides that is our Cersei Dynex, which is our big technology vendor there. They do our. Our catalog and our databases, looking databases, our catalog and everything. Um, so they offered this product and we were like, oh, that's great. We would like to use their product because it'll integrate nicely with our catalog and our database. Um. And they were using a third party uh to actually provide that. Software. I don't exactly what happened. The third party, I think, is in the UK. Um, there was some kind of a breakdown and they just immediately said, we are not working with you anymore. If if you talk to the third party, they say Cersei Dynex. Did it, if you talk to Cersei Dynex, thankfully, the other guy did it. So I haven't really gotten into the weeds about that, but um. So what is happening? So Cersei, this happened very suddenly, like nobody had any. Notice, really, like it wasn't working on a Friday. What's wrong with the app? And then like Monday was like, this is gone. So they are, they have been for for at least a year doing the development. Their long-term plan was to 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 stop using this third party and implement their own. Homegrown app. So they have been working on developing that. It's not ready yet. I kind of wonder if that's what happened, is they thought it would be ready and maybe they hadn't. Contracted with the third party or the third party was upset, but I'm not sure. But, um. So so they are working on that. They're having weekly uh sessions so that. Alexis goes, I don't have time to go to the Lexus at Tensas to see what the progress is. They're doing data testing of the new app. Um, I think in February, if not now, uh, we did not volunteer to be one of the beta testing because. We don't have the the staff at the time to participate in that and get the feedback. Um, so they're hoping to launch in March. Um. And again, I haven't been to any of these sessions, so I don't know what the look and feel is. They say that it's great and we're going to love it. Um, but I haven't seen it. I can ask Alexis to give me a little update about what what she thinks and how it's looking. Um, obviously, we are not paying for this product that they're no longer giving us. Um. And I think it remains to be seen, uh, I need to talk to the city attorney, remains to be seen, you know, what else. Are we, we need to look at the contract and see exactly what it says about this, providing this product. And, you know, obviously, they're not charging us for it, but do they owe us? Something else for the inconvenience or the uh, yeah. And some other libraries, um, like LA County had been working with another vendor already, so they were very close to. A new app and so they were able to, you know, do some kind of emergency funding and rush that through and so they have an operating app now. But again, we're so small, we don't have the staff capacity to. Much less the budget, right? I mean, to go out and do your whole process of finding a new app. Vendor. So our our thinking again is, you know, we'll stay with the Cersei Dynex product. Um, and this is, you know, it's interesting because we've been with Cersei Dynex for for a long, long time and really, I was talking to Barb about it because this was bad. I mean, you know, like this is unbelievable.
Well, that was my my question was, uh, also, has there been, you know, customer revolt over this?
Um.
Have we gotten feedback, I would say?
Yes, they've gotten a lot of feedback, for sure. People were, yeah, people. Yes, they've gotten a lot of feedback, for sure. People were, yeah, people were really upset. I think uh the county library, you know, had the city, the county attorney, you know, done something, saying that it's a breach.
I meant, I meant our, our.
Oh, our, sorry, sorry, sorry. Yeah, people are are disappointed. Apparently, it's still um. One of the things that people like to use it for is that it has their library card.
Yes.
And so apparently, I was working the desk the other day and and apparently it's like a lot of stuff doesn't work. But they apparently your your thing still is in there. So that's one of the things that people really like and so that's still there.
You can't renew the books and.
Yeah, I think that, you know, it's not talking to to our our catalog. So yeah, I mean, people definitely have noticed, but no one has been, you know, they're like.
I was just concerned that that the 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 library would get a block aisle.
No, I think people are sort of, you know, we've explained it and said this, we have no more knowledge of this. It's a vendor issue. That we have no control over and, you know, we're actively just helping, working on the solution and you're gonna be happy about what comes next. And and and, you know, the the um device version of the catalog, it's not bad. I mean, it does all these things, except the only thing it doesn't do is story of our code. But it it's different look and feel, obviously, but it's not too bad. So I mean, again, it's not an app, so you'd have to put the favorite in your thing and they open the webpage, but it looks pretty good. So yeah, people, I mean, people notice, but which is interesting because they like it. I mean, it's nice to know that they've been really using it and liking it. Um but people haven't been too.
Okay.
Been out of shape about it. You know, I think they sort of, you know, we said it's not our fault and they believe us. And that we, and we are, we're we're working on it. Um I will try to get you, you know what, next time, I'll get Alexis to get some screenshots. What it's gonna look like, the new one, so and what the functionality is gonna be like, so we can look at that next time, just for fun.
That'd be lovely. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I just haven't had time.
Sorry to, sorry to percale your.
No, no, that was a good question. And yeah, no, that was good to bring that up because it wasn't on my list and um. Because I missed the last board meeting. I'm a little modulated. Um let's see, uh a staffing update. Um you know that Bree started, they've been here about a month, but of course, part of that was, we were all off. Um but they're really hitting the ground running, just what we had hoped for, really good team player. Um easy to get along with and and um just willing to do whatever they need to do. Uh so really excited to see that person kind of getting their feed and figuring out how they fit in. So looking forward to introducing them to you next time. Um we have a couple of recruitments going right now. We have the part-time children's librarian. One of the part-time children's librarian positions is um in recruitment. Uh Maida just reviewed applications. I think she had a date that she thought would be worth interviewing. So we'll go forward with that. And we are also in the process of recruiting aides. We have, I think, two aide vacancies. Good, someone, just one of our favorite um aides. The, not that we have favorites, but a really good aide, um just resigned because she's in the entertainment industry. And now that, so we're, she's got business, yeah, so so she's very sad to go and we're sad to lose her. But so we have that vacancy and then we have a um a clerk vacancy and typically that would be a promotion from an aide. So we'll have the three aides to fill out of this pool. Um and it will be great to have them. Uh we are, because we're missing that half-time children's librarian and because, you you know, we didn't have. Uh Bree, we were working with a retired annuitant, so a retired librarian to come on board. And we're still getting that to happen. They're supposed to come on board and they would be with us like January, February, March. Um and they're just paid out of our regular part-time budget. Um but it's someone who has a ton of experience and um. You know, could really help us and kind of take the load off because I don't know if you've been in and noticed, but Maida is on the desk.
Yep.
All the time. And she has so many responsibilities and you cannot get them done if you're on the desk all the time. So that's just a problem that we need to solve and um probably will do um. When the retired annuitant comes on board or before they leave uh in March. Um we will probably do a recruitment for the substitute librarians. Um oh, and the reason that we're short staffed is because Olivia is out and had a cute baby. I'll pass this around.
Yes, I I sure did. I uh asked for a photo.
Yeah.
Very, very cute baby. I I am not ashamed to say that I do not buy that all babies are beautiful. Some of them are not, and this is a very cute baby.
She sent it and said, this is our newest library card holder. His name is Orson.
Oh, Orson.
Orson, yeah, he was a great big baby. Um so so staffing, yeah, we're, we're.
Oh, my God, Orson. What a great name.
Um so yeah, we've been, we've been a little stressed because we're with Olivia out.
Oh, look at him. Granddaughter. Who's this? Oh, look at this one.
Does she have a library card?
Yeah, you can, these ultrasounds.
She didn't like the baby, like their kids, so yeah, they weren't quite that high.
Yeah.
Sorry, it means to get us off, kind of off the agenda, but um uh events coming up. So um we've talked before about the sustainability grant that the public services staff got from the state library to do programming. So big kickoff um around of the series of programs.
I'm excited about that seed.
Yeah, so kickoff this Saturday, January twentieth. Um we have been events every month through June, maybe?
Yeah.
Um I think, um so some really great stuff is in the works. Um I, we're still working on kind of the the presentation of, we have like one little piece of one of those. That needs to be confirmed before we can print from that list, all those things, but this is the kickoff. Um so kickoff the seed library, we're partnering with the community garden and we're how fascinating, beautiful. Can do plant swap and seed swap. And, you know, we're unveiling our um, the seed library, which is really cute. It's a repurposed card catalog that we paint, have painted and.
Oh, that sounds really nice.
Yeah, I don't.
One of our turn of roses.
Yeah, very, it's ninety-year-old. Yeah, beautiful, too.
Do we really check them out or do we acquire the seeds?
Well, I. When I read this, I was like, what do you mean borrow them? My understanding that I just got at lunch today was that um it's the reason we're checking them out. Quote unquote, is for a statistic.
I thought checkout means, you know, you check something out and you take a look at it.
Well, there's checkout and checkout.
Yeah, we check out, we we hope that people, when they take a book, they bring it back.
Right.
That's the.
Versus check it out. Yeah, so we 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 use that that way, but um.
Oh, that was lighter, too?
Yeah. Like check it out. It's like a double, you know, double meaning. Um um so, so yes, they're they're somehow using the catalog to, you know. Track how the usage by checking them out. Um so we'll see what that looks like. I haven't seen details, but um it's really. It's gonna be located, you know where the ostrich cage used to be, it's gonna be on that wall right there. So that will be in a good place where staff can kind of keep an eye on it, because what will happen is people will, you know, people with. Who are mentally ill will come and just like, oh, we'll take them all. So yeah, this is by having a kind of come to the desk and check it out. Oh. Just sort of, and and.
They're all in their stomach.
You know, it's a grant, so we want to be able to report back to the state.
Yeah, I mean, did everybody take carrots but not potatoes?
Right. Yeah, I don't know if it'll be that level detail. I think it'll just be like seed packet.
Okay.
Gone.
Yeah. So we're excited about that. That should be a fun event. We have lots of, again, this grant, you know, we got like twenty-two thousand dollars. So we never have enough money in the library budget to like buy cute little giveaways, you know, so those guys bought it. They, because it's, you know, free money. So yeah, like they've got zipper pouch for your, I mean, they got all kinds of pizza. So come, because they've got free stuff.
Yay.
Um and then the other big program that were happening is a poetry workshop. I'm gonna send that around.
I've never heard of this guy.
Yeah, who's this guy?
And it's uh, and it's so popular, they closed it already.
Yeah, I, so we publicized it, so we.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of.
Twenty-five people signed up for that. Um and people are signed up for the rest, too.
I know.
Um so we created a waitlist, so hopefully and we'll really push the people about, are you really coming, are you really coming? So they'll release their spots if they're not coming. Um yeah, people super excited about the opportunity, I I believe. To do something creative and set aside that time. I think it's the same with like the hands-on practice stuff. People are looking for those opportunities.
Well, we've talked about, we talked about that during the strategic plan. People are looking to the library to be more than just a place to get a book.
Yeah, so that's, that was really exciting. I mean, I didn't know, I was, I I was sort of surprised that we got such quick uh response.
Well, yeah, and and some people have contacted Ron and I, and I thought, I don't, I can't, you know, everybody, and I, nope, I can't get.
I mean, they were trying to get like a special.
Oh, interesting. So they contacted me to say it's closed, can, you know, and I.
Well, smoothie was no.
But it, but you know what? It's nice. It's nice that things like this are popular.
Yeah.
You know, that people want to get out and do things, so.
And we're grateful that Ron is willing to.
No, he do it. He loves it.
Yes. Um another event that's fun that's coming up, I don't have to pass around, but I'll go. Um one of our teen advisory board members had an idea to do a book trivia event, kind of like bar trivia. But in the community room and without alcohol, because it's little kids, but they're little teens. And um it, I don't, it's a whole complicated thing about how it works, but they sign up and and we'll do that event. We'll have some, some kids will probably sign up as their own groups, but for kids that are independent. Yeah, um kids that are not, you know, signing up, that will have some little meet and greets so they can get to know each other before this event happens. So basically, I think there's six books that we picked, so like basically the kids all have to read.
They read the books.
Yeah, they have to read the six books and then the trivia is about those.
One of the teachers does that at Marengo.
Oh, really?
She has heard about.
All the other classes wish that their teachers did that. Hopefully we.
That goes a much more fun way of doing a book report, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, we're, we're excited. I mean, it took a lot of like, you know, the, the TAB folks are super enthusiastic. And, you know, time sky, like, and we're always like, well, you know, we get back because we're like. It might not work, you know, we we need to think about how are, how are we gonna get people to come? And so it's kind of a fun process with them because they come in, you know, we could do this, we could do this, and it's good for them. Because I think they kind of see, oh, here's what it takes to actually do this. So um, yeah, so uh it should be fun. And I hope it's well attended. Um but the team, it's a team, the TAB folks are really excited about it. And I I am excited because the TAB, they tend, when they've done programs in the past, they tend to be tended to be geared toward their own age group. And they don't come.
No, this is lovely to see that they're.
Yeah, the the teens, the teens don't come. So I think that it's really great that the teens are planning something for the elementary school. I think it's great. And the elementary school kids love it, you know, in the summer when we have the STEAM people. It's all the teenagers and I, the little kids just, they love it. Um so that is coming up. I don't, you know, it's out with the dates. Um and then the other thing I wanted to let you know is uh just so you know. This is sort of a strategic planning thing. One of our, the one part of the strategic plan that we're doing pretty well about kind of keeping on track. And making progress, not the one, there's others too, but um is the technology piece. So we are working right now on investigating and looking at um alternatives to our current. Computer reservation and printing services product, which is very clunky and um kind of antiquated. Um and in addition to looking at that, looking at adding other services that are typically provided, like the scanning mainly. Um so Jenny is in the process of doing that. Uh she's done a lot of research. We decided the product that we think we want to use. Um but there's kind of a long road because. It will cost more than what we do now. And um, you know, we have to kind of make the argument. For why, why are you changing vendors? And it's gonna cost us more money, like we're, you know, so what's the value? What's the benefit? So Jenny's been putting that together and and once we get a little further and have concrete numbers, we'll take that to the city manager. So I think what will happen is that uh we will, we will amend and continue the contract with our existing folks. Um for, oh, well, we'll see, six months, I don't know. Um and then in the new fiscal year, hopefully we'll um, you know, we'll ask for the money to upgrade these products. To better software products. Um so that's a big thing. I mean, this has been on our list since twenty seventeen. Um so really exciting. I mean, again, just to have a staff person to do these projects is so great. Um and Jenny is great. So that's going on, so we continue to kind of plug away on making these technological improvements. Um we talked about the patio tables, uh so that's exciting. And then the other thing I just wanted to share. It's not, well, it's not operations. I'll do it under library director. So that's it for library operations.
Okay, well, thank you so much for that update. Um it was very informed and thorough. Appreciate that. Uh we're moving on to communications, board president communications. Uh well, I I'm pleased to be here. I I hope to see you all again next month. Um and uh I'm very excited about the opportunity to devise a a better and more robust. Way to honor all of our library volunteers uh in conjunction with the status.
Thank you. It was a great discussion for.
Well, no, it was, it was, it was illuminating. I had, I just thought that was, we've always done it that way, so. Those, those, I I think it'd be a much uh more egalitarian way to to honor people and and thoughtful. Um moving on to board member communications, uh I know it says who would like to go first, but I like to have Bianca go since she is our vice president.
Oh, well, thank you. Yeah, no, I I just always find that uh uh the creativity and we can, and how we talk. And stimulate new ideas, so I look forward to another year on the library board and new and different things. I know, we'll get involved in. And 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 just, I was at at the library today and I noticed um in the quiet area. The study area, it was incredibly crowded.
So.
And and it just, and it just goes to show you that, and everybody had their laptops or their iPads. Just people need a place to go to just do, do their work and be quiet and how, a lot of young people. So they probably, and I thought, you know, like, I know I grew up, I didn't have a a room of my own. Um and and I came to the library all the time, so yeah, and it's still like that.
You don't have to buy anything, you know, I mean, you can go to Starbucks or whatever.
And it's too cold right now to sit at Starbucks. Yeah, but it was, it was nice to see so many young people. And the teen room was pretty uh busy, too. Yeah.
Who would like to go first? I'll throw something out there. Uh this uh December fifteen South Pasadena Review. The city put in notice of vacancies of all the different conditions.
I read that.
And I felt so special because it's only the library board of trustees that does not meet in the council chamber. I think we're, that's really cool.
Yeah.
Um uh I have a little pithy quote about libraries. The very existence of libraries affords the best evidence that we may yet have hope for the future of man. That T S Eliot. Um and then one final thing, uh some talk earlier this evening about the Brown Act. And I realize how ignorant I am about the Brown Act, and I think that the city does training. And I hope that there will be another training session about Brown Act.
Yeah, let me check on when that is. Yes, they have to do that regularly. Um let me check and see.
I think I saw something a couple of months ago about it.
They they probably will do it after the new appointments, you know, they'll probably do it like in February or something.
And I think that um Rox, um Roxanne, who's our new city attorney, she, we just got a new city attorney firm in really basically July. And she's been pretty busy. Um and I know I just saw something from. Um, and I know I just saw something from her saying she's trying to now organize a training for all the commissioners and the city council and the staff on Brown Act specifically, and other procedures, so I think that will be coming.
Yeah.
I think that we do it.
But it's nice to have the reminder.
It's a simple, you know, you're, you're an attorney, you know, don't spend the client's money is, is the, the rule. Don't talk to anyone else on the board about anything to do with the board.
Right.
Is the easiest.
Or if you do, go ahead.
Or when?
Go your fine if you do.
Uh, well, uh.
No, no updates from the other, so thank you Kathy for always helping us um, think differently about things, not just keep doing things the way that we've always done it, and just to raise when things are taking a lot of capacity from your team, you know, there's so many things that you accomplish, and we definitely don't want you just to keep doing things, just because it's always been there, it's not really, you know, needed or, you know.
We appreciate, I mean, the only reason we can come and have those conversations is because you guys are so supportive and, you know, we appreciate that a lot.
Important with the um, you know, those staff, that we do have to be, thank you.
Okay.
I just have a question, you know, where do we get these flyers, I always, they're always great to look at, I don't know who designs them, I mean, the colors are great and just the.
Um, yeah, that, uh, I did that one, because somebody was out of the office, so I just got in there and did it. Um, and Alexis did, well, Alexis did the logo for so and so, I think, you know, which would carry throughout. Yeah, she came up with the logo and um, she did that one. But yeah, we have some, we have some good, some good people.
Yeah.
It's sort of, I mean, none of us are, you know, trained, but, you know.
Canvas.
Canvas, I was gonna say Canvas. You still have to have at least a little bit of an idea, but um, yeah. Thank you.
Well, thank you, it was, uh, uh, I, I think that's the first time I remember everybody having a commentary, so. Uh, we're gonna move on uh, from board communication to city liaison communication.
Yeah, I just, again, thank you all, you, I always find these discussions really great, and it's just so wonderful to have all of you on this board and contributing, and have a lot of great things to say, and Kathy, thank you for all your hard work. And I think it's gonna be really exciting, I think some of the things we've said about people and it's impacted, I really do believe, and I, I think it's the one thing about South Pasadena that's different than a lot of other communities, it's very community oriented. People are seeking community, and the library is really the place where people come together, so.
Now, are you, uh, can we ask a question of you?
Yeah.
Are, are, do you get to keep this assignment then?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know, I know that um, that Evelyn is looking at those.
You serve as the pleasure of the mayor?
Yes, so um, she has to take the whole list, and there's a lot of them. Um, it's not just commissions, there's the metro board and this, and the Southern California Association of Governments, and there's uh, California League of Cities represented in each one, so there's a lot, which I didn't even realize till last year. Yeah, oh, Sally would know, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
There's a lot, so I think Evelyn is working in that as a captain, having, and I might be having lunch with her on Monday, maybe.
Can I ask if, if you would like to continue, like, would that be your?
I mean, I would like to unless, unless you think there's a better person.
No, no. I mean, no. Yeah, I think that you're kind of our champion for the.
Yeah, we appreciate that.
Site planning, and it, I would love to have you continue, I know it's up to the mayor, but.
Yeah.
I just wanted to see you.
Yes, stick with, yeah, so I, I will be putting in my um, plugs on Monday.
Oh, good, thank you.
Uh, well, then, um, with that, I'm going to move on to the friends of the library.
And, and me and my reports, right?
Do you have anything you'd like to share?
I do have a lot that I'd like to share, um, so this has actually been a very, very busy week for me, um, tomorrow will be my fifth library, friends of the library related meeting, um, but um, the bookstore, when you talk about kind of rewarding people, the bookstore decided they wanted to have a get together for their um, their volunteers, because they don't know each other. So um, I arranged for them to have a little party at the house, at the home of Teresa Mario, Alina, and so that was on Monday night, and was really great for the volunteers to get to meet people they didn't know, and there were about twenty of them that attended, so it was really, really nice. Um, it was a lovely evening, and then I had a restoration concert yesterday and a bookkeeping and a finance meeting today and another one tomorrow. Um, so, and then our, we have our annual meeting, as I mentioned, on Thursday, the eighteenth at twelve noon, so we've kind of changed it. Um, and um, then we'll do our twenty twenty four, uh, board will be voted on, the bylaws updates in the, in the budget. And so we'll have refreshments, so I'm inviting all of you, if you'd like to come and you're available and just want to have some free food. Yes, huh? Um, as I mentioned at the last meeting, Rose Baron, our bookkeeper, after eleven years is retiring, but I'm excited to announce that I am the new bookkeeper. No, but it's a paid job.
Oh, nice.
Not very much, but it pays a little, and so um, I have to step down from the friends as a voting member, I will still be a board member, but I will not be a voting member, and I will, I'm not, I'm gonna relinquish my other job as um, operations.
So will you be treasurer or just?
No, I'm not, yeah, just the bookkeeper.
Treasurer, I forget her name.
Yeah, it's um, it's actually a lot of work, there's a lot of stuff, Melissa's the CFO, this one is, you know, accounts receivable, accounts payable, tax stuff, all that. Yeah, so it would be, it, it, you know, um, I realized how much I actually do know when I went into the meeting, because I've been the operations, because I've done, I manage the, our um, our donor snap, which is our data base, so I kind of get where things go, so I'm kind of excited, a little worried about that.
I mean, you know, having the continuity.
Yeah.
Yes, really.
It, the historical knowledge really for the friends, because it is such a weird little group, I have to say that is, you know, and I, I, I get the pieces, so I'm excited, like I said, I'm really sad though that I, you know, I can be an advisor, because I'm the immediate past president, um, but no vote, so I have to. It's hard to do, um, so anyway, we finished the year, um, the article came out of, about our membership drive, but we finished, our numbers are a little different, um, with two hundred and thirty eight members for a total of twenty seven thousand forty one dollars and um, and membership dues, basically. Um, so the, the, the letter, our um, new campaign letter hit the um, mailbox on Saturday, and um, we already had twenty twenty that paid and for a total of seventeen hundred thirty three dollars, and there's eight more in my box. Today, I'm not opening and giving to the membership, so that's, it's coming in, and I don't know how many have paid online, but it's really great. So I always ask you, if you haven't done so, renew your membership or join. Um, the bookstore, our small and mighty bookstore is so amazing, um, they went out with a bang this year. As you know, the bookstore brought in seventy five hundred dollars for the annual sale in December. Um, eBay ended up with five thousand dollars worth of sales, and they just started that, and um, in total revenue um, from the bookstore, not total, but what they just brought in from the little last chance was forty two thousand seven hundred fifty two, so a grand total of fifty five thousand dollars, two hundred fifty two.
That's a record in recent years.
It's record, because really, they're selling fifty cent books.
It's amazing.
It's amazing, and the dedication of those.
eBay's the uh, the historical one.
The historical, that's less than six months old, that, you know, they, that they've done, and, and uh, going to serving with a purpose, a lot of um, a lot of the friends' library bookstores can make eighty hundred thousand just on eBay, but we're just getting started, I'm sure it will grow. That's really exciting, the restoration concerts are doing really well, just had a meeting, um, there's no more series tickets for this year, but they've already got a lineup in place, and so their next concert's the twenty eighth. Our communications is really, really, really strong, uh, Roseanne is taking on a new position, so she won't be doing communications, she's gonna do operations, but again, follow us. And so, um, this is my last official, I guess, trustee meeting, so I wanted to thank you all for what you do and your support of the wonderful library. And Sally someday may be joining you in the public, coming to some of the meetings, because I love, I mean, what am I gonna do on my second Tuesday? So, thank you for allowing me to be here.
Thank you so much, and it's been a pleasure. So, oh, gosh. Uh, with, with that, I'm going to turn to our trustee liaison to the friends, book communication, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, nothing, it is just, you know, I've learned a lot from you, you know, just, you know, working with you and with the friends, so thank you, thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much, uh, we're gonna turn it back for our library director for any uh, communications, I believe you said you had something you wanted to.
I do, I just have one thing, I wanted to let you know that um, I had my annual evaluation with the city manager, and I wanted to share the goals for the coming year, that she has um, sketched out for me, I mean, based on suggestions that I had. But um, just so you know, like what I'm expected to be doing, um, so the site planning, obviously, is one thing. Um, making sure we keep on track with the technology upgrades, in particular, um, the RFID, which is next fiscal year. Um, and also, for, for me, I, you know, we have all these new um, efficiency kind of software, we have things to make us be able to work better together, Microsoft Teams, we have this new phone system, um, web-based, a lot of stuff on the cloud. And, and as a team, we really need to figure out how to maximize the, make that, make the most of that for us. And it's tricky, because we have people with different levels of comfort uh, or interest, I mean, I have people who use paper calendar, I have people who use, you know, so in order for it to be an effective tool, everybody needs to have at least a certain level of proficiency and understanding, because it's not gonna work if I'm trying to do a little chat with Meta and Alexis, and Alexis is an online or whatever. Um, so that's something that's kind of important operationally, that, you know, maybe people wouldn't think about, but that's on my list. Um, and also just the opportunities to, you know, right now, we have a wiki on a different platform, and can we, can we move the wiki into this platform that we share? You know, there's just a lot of opportunity for improvements, um, even in just file, file storage, you know. You can imagine, um, our, our files, on the, you know, our digital files are, it's huge and overgrown, and there's ten different places to find things, it's very, um, it's very hard to, it's not, it's not conducive to productivity. So, you know, making some thoughtful decisions when we move everything to the cloud, um, it's gonna be really great for us, so that's on my list. Um, developing new communication materials for the library, that's obviously uh, coming out of the strategic plan. Um, library referrer, welcome packet, things like that, that we've wanted to do, um, and that are in the strategic plan. Um, she asked me to, I think you know that we put together um, an, a diversity, equity, inclusion staff committee. Um, she would like to see that citywide, and asked me to, to take the lead on that. So we'll see what that looks like, um, it's exciting, I mean, I think it's really good, sometimes I feel like the library is the only department that's kind of.
Focused?
Yeah, that, I mean, it's, it's, it's part of our DNA, and you know, it's, it's part of what libraries are like, because we're all about inclusive, and yeah. Um, but I know that there's people in other departments that would love to be part of these kinds of things, and so I think it's a great move from the city manager to really try to create some, some progress structure around that. Um, so that, we'll see what that looks like in terms of where that goes, um, and then lastly, uh, emergency management stuff, so our procedure manual, um, reinstituting some of the kind of staff uh, educational pieces, like where's the gas shut off, and where are the fire extinguisher, one of the exits, you know, we used, apparently in the old days, they used to do like a walk through every month, so that everybody was on top of all that stuff, and we just haven't done any of that. Um, one good thing that's happening, uh, that's related to all of this sort of, you know, we maintain these emergency kits, and we do it ourselves, you know, Curtis is in charge, he keeps track, what's expired, he replaces it, um, and our first aid kits, we've also managed those ourselves, but they really haven't been managed, so it looks like the city is trying to make an effort through risk management, coordinate that at the city level, which would be fantastic, to, to have them hire the company to come and stock those and keep those, so I think that um, emergency management is a big deal, but it'll help if somebody else is doing some of those pieces, and we don't have to do those pieces on top of the other pieces. So those are just, I just wanted to share with you that that's, that's what she called out for me for the next year.
Well, thank you, I, I'm sure that it was a glowing recording, so.
Yeah, no, no.
Values you are.
Yeah, she didn't have any, um, yeah, there's nothing that was like.
If we don't have any other public comments?
We do not.
Other than to comment on how lovely Sally's hair is.
I know. Pretty, I was gonna ask her if she gets a good.
Uh, uh, I'm gonna call it at eight forty-five P M, I'm gonna rejoin us, uh, until next meeting, second Tuesday, October. And we'll see you all.
Thank you.